This also is, it's also reached a point where, from the accounting standpoint, this money now is material. This is significant amount of money now in the MDD. So, the auditor, we've talked about it, you know, this isn't like, oh, they've got $3,000 over there, well, you know, who cares? It's gonna happen for 50,000 by the end of this year. So what we need is, we have an ordinance that we passed a couple of months ago. So we have our comprehensive controls ordinance, which had four parts to the thing. We don't need all four parts, we only need the first part. We don't need to worry about investment policy, because they don't invest their money, we do. But there's one of them, which is basically the controls. Who can sign checks? What's the authorized spending limit? You know, things like, you know, where the mayor can unauthorized to do things. We need that for the MDD. So what we need is, we need the exact same structure, just that one item, you know, that will say, for instance, let's say that any bill the MDD pays has to have one signature from a town signer and one from the MDD, from their authorized sign. So, you know, that way, we kind of, we have some control, but what I wanna get away from is, technically speaking, right now, the MDD has to say, we have a project, come to the city, wait till we vote on it, and then we say, okay, and then they go and do it. It's clumsy. And it, I'd like to streamline it, but the auditor, we've talked, and I know that we want to have another control on that. Okay? So, I think what we need to do is, we need to write that, just that first one, it's like three pages, just the first one, that will delegate, you know, some authority to them. You know, say like, okay, you know, you could have two check signers on the MDD. It's the MDD president, let's say, and the MDD, you know, finance director, or finance office, wherever the chief financial officers. They're the designated MDD check signers. Something like that. Okay? I don't think it's hard, I just think we mirror what we have, because the auditor likes what we have for the city. But clearly, not the other sections, not the other, like I say. I don't remember what the four sections were. Those, do you remember? It was like, the investment policy was one section, there was, controls was another, like, posting stuff was another thing, or, I forget exactly. But we need that, we need that sooner rather than later, we need that pretty quick. Because again, this is now a material amount of money that we need to have here. Okay? Plus, I'd like to give them some hands-off. I'd like to give them a spending limit, and say, if there's a project you wanna do that's less than $5,000, just do it. You know what I mean? Okay. Lynda?
Yes.
You feel like taking this on?
Oh, writing the, the financial?
Well, you did control, you know, you've obviously, you know, had some experience with it. You don't have to commit right now, I just, I'm offering it to you as a first shot, because you had written the control stuff before. I'm just trying to mimic that first section of ours.
Yeah.
But, you know, we can talk after the meeting, but it's something we need to get done. But I want you to think about it. You don't have to give me, you don't have to make any attempts right now, but you're the natural person, I really don't want Serena inviting ordinance to handcuff your brother. So, let me know afterwards, okay? Think about it, take a look at that, that front section of the comprehensive controls, and let me know which step. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, next up is water wells, is everybody good on the MDD then? Okay. All right, MDD, Lynda, you guys are doing great?
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You too, Lynda.
Thank you.
Yes, Serena.
All right, next up is the water well status, okay? So, obviously, we have not dropped the wells, we, we, we work, here's the staffs. The well drillers that have to drop the well, we got in the queue. We hoped to have it done before Christmas, that didn't happen. The well company is currently working on another well for another city. Apparently, my understanding is, there was a problem, and so, he's stuck in a sense that, instead of just pulling up stakes and running away, it's, he had to go, they have to go to their city council, and the way of their council, wherever this is, to say, look, there's a problem, before I pull up stakes and run away, what do you wanna do? You know, you want me to move three feet to the left and drill again, or, I don't know what the problem is, but he said, he was, he was trying to be a good guy and not pull up and run to the next job, but he had to wait for them to give him his course of action, but we're next. So, we're ready for it, we're, we're, our other tank that we did maintenance on is up and running. So, we put a new liner in the steel tank, it's been offline for about a month, and we've got that, the liners in, everything's good, we're operational now. So the system isn't red. We've been running the last two months on only one well? Just, just one well? We turned the others off, just to make sure that we can operate without any problems, because we're gonna have to turn the wells off to drop. So that's been done for the last two months, no glitches, we haven't seen anything yet. Yeah. So, basically, no news is no news. I'll let you know when it happens, but we're in a holding pattern till we get that, till we get that done. Okay? Any questions on the, again, we're trying to, trying to drop two of the three wells. Okay? All right, next up, concrete roads. This is a handout that I meant to put in the council packet, I just, somehow I didn't get it to Wyndham last time. So, this is the text dot roadway design. So, I don't, can you, can you blow that up a little bit?
It's just gonna get fuzzy.
Oh, okay. So basically, what this is, so according to text dot standards, when you build a road, you don't wanna put obstacles next to the road, you don't wanna have people run into things. So, the question is, what are the text dot standards for obstacles? And it obviously depends upon how fast you're going, because what they really talk about is a clear zone, and what they refer to that as is recovery area. So if you accidentally got off the edge of the road, how much room do you have to get back on the road? We're gonna have some design issues in the city, because bar ditches don't count. They don't count that as recoverable space when you're on a slope, it's gotta be flat. So, we're not gonna be able to meet this standard, probably with our, with our pavement, but we're gonna do the best we can with the shoulders. But where it's critically important, where we're headed with this is, all those mailboxes and edifices that are up on the edge of the street are gone. They've all gotta go away. They have to be on the other side of the bar ditch, they've gotta be about 15 feet off the street, it's gotta be a minimum of 10 for any, anything here, you can see, this is the clear zone, and this is for a rural, local road that only goes 20 miles an hour, minimum is 10 feet. There's gotta be a 10-foot clear zone. So at some point, we're gonna end up either writing an ordinance, or we're gonna have to send letters out as the roads get closer, to say, everybody that has these mailboxes, you are, and I've talked to the attorneys, you have encroached on city property, these must be removed, because we're gonna put the road in, and you have this amount of time to remove them, or will remove them. Basically, be a nice guy about it, but there is no ifs, ands, or buts, they must go away. So they're going away, anything that's up within 10 feet of that road.
Plus, they're gonna be in the way of the construction equipment.
Exactly, they have to go away because of the construction, that's right. So, I mean, it's, it's a practical matter. Over here, we almost had none of them over here, the only thing that we had over on this side of town, was we had people that had planted planters, right next to their driveway, right on the edge of the street, they had planted like tulips and cactuses and stuff, and they were gone. And that was just the equipment.
Tree blooms.
You know, they what?
There were some tree blooms.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, there were stuff, some of the stuff just, you know, it is what it is, it had to go by that. But almost nobody over here has any mailboxes, because this is the older part, I guess, you know, they didn't, there's no mailboxes.
No, they were at Clint's house.
You know, so, there you go, they're all behind Clint's. So, so this is where we're headed, is this. Now, the other place where this comes up in play, is you might not have noticed, but if you go down the high ridge, on the right-handed side, about 18 inches off the street, is this four-foot tall block of concrete that has mailboxes on it. It's about eight inches off the edge of the street, the post is almost on the street. I've effectively measured, I think you and I measured it, I think the actual concrete is in the street, by like an inch. So, that mailbox facility is toast, it's got to go away. Now, it's gotta go away anyway for the road, but it's not, it should never have been built the way it is, where it is, it's not legal, what it is. So, at some point in the fall, we're gonna relocate the mailboxes, we gotta get that cleaned up, because, as we think about the road, between Green Meadow and Melody, there's no way to get past that. There's no bypass, we're gonna have to go off the shoulder, we're gonna have to construct shoulders over there, because when that concrete goes in, there's no way around it, we can't go through the woods. So sooner, one of the earlier things we're gonna have to do is get rid of those mailboxes, because we gotta figure out how we're going to get around, you're gonna have to go somehow from Green Meadow to Melody Lane without touching the high ridge. So, we're gonna have to get rid of the mailboxes at some point, so we can at least figure out the drainage, how we're gonna do that, to put in a temporary bypass to get up to Melody Lane.
Were we talking about, at one point, maybe putting them up here?
They had, they're gonna go here. The easiest thing to do is, there's space here to put them underneath the overhang, we extend the concrete, it'll be covered, and we have off-street driveway. I mean, it's the best location till we can get a separate building. It keeps you off the street, it's covered, and it's already here. So, to me, that's the best location for, you know, reconstructing that on the edge of the street somewhere doesn't seem to be worth a lot, and it's minimum cost.
Yeah, it'd be much cheaper.
We just lay a little bit more concrete under the overhang, and say, or move the mailbox itself. We moved it very inexpensively the last time. So, so that's, that's coming up, that's something that's going to happen at some point. We have the, well, I'll talk about that at the end, but we're gonna have another meeting about the roads coming up. All right, any questions about the roads? There's a lot of issues with the roads, I'm trying to pick them off a little bit, I don't wanna inundate you with 27 things at once. They're gonna be continuously on the agenda as we talk about these issues, okay? All right, anybody have questions about the roads? Any, any, I think, I hope everybody read the mayor's letters, I tried to be as articulate as I could, both mayor's letter dedicated to the, to the road issue. Okay. All right, next up then, we have a, next up on the agenda is the court of record. Lynda, are you on this one? Okay, so let me preface this real quick. So, basic idea is this, as, you know, as towns grow up, you have to grow up with the town. So, you know, like right now, we don't have a police force, at some point, towns are big enough, they have a police department. You know, they have public works, and then they buy equipment. So things, as towns grow, you reach a point where you need to be a real, you need to grow up. Well, when you first start out as a small town, you have your own municipal court, but basically, you, your court is, is fine, but it's like having a rent-a-cop. It's not a, you know, the rent-a-cop is a nice guy, but if somebody says, screw you, I'm not gonna obey you, there's nothing a rent-a-cop can do. So, when it comes to courts, we have our own municipal court here, but because we're the smallest, lowest court you can be, somebody can say, I'm gonna go to Denton County, and they can go over us, because we're the smallest, lowest you can be. Most cities are one step above your court of record, and that means that your court matters, all the money you spend counts. If you wanna appeal it, then you appeal it because there was an error. It's a real appeal, it's the real thing. It's not like, hey, you're a podunk little town, we don't like what you did, you can't do that, it's a real court, it's the real thing. So, I think it's important that we knock off some of these things and we grow up, because this is something, we should've done this in the past, we just don't have much court activity, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't move ahead and get this thing squared away right now. So I asked Lynda to do some research on this, so, Lynda, Lynda, you have to do it by ordinance, so Lynda, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, I hope you all read through the ordinance, if you have any questions, let me know. The, just, the basic highlights of this process are, we created a court through an ordinance. You have to repeal that ordinance, abolish the existing court, and create a new court. We don't just turn our court into a record, we have to create one. So, this ordinance is inclusive of, I tried to anticipate any questions that anybody had, address any kind of issues that I can think of. I reviewed the ordinances of several cities, and this is, I brought probably three different cities that were the main ones, I brought them together, and then I personalized it somewhat to make it reflect the process and procedures that we use right now in Lincoln Village that's already working for us. So some of the things in here, we go through the jurisdiction, I outlined this, I think it's also very important for something like this, that our town attorney reviews this, and I would also like our municipal judge to review it as well. So we reviewed the jurisdictions, I outlined all of that. Under the municipal judge, council has an option of appointing for either a two-year term or a four-year term. I, you're welcome to change it, I just anticipated that if you find a judge that you'd like, you'd rather not visit it every two years.
How long has the current judge served?
I think it's-
Ten years?
Yeah, eight years, it's been a long time. There are two different, 4.4 and 4.5 seem to say the same thing, but what that is, is 4.4 is, if the seat is vacant, if something happens to our judge, and the seat's vacant, and you have to appoint a judge to stand in his place, 4.5 is, if you need an additional judge to help him, if he's on vacation, you need a temporary judge, if he's sick, or if we have just, we're inundated with cases, and we need to split and have two dockets. So that's why that looks the same, it's actually not. I think one of the biggest things about court of record is the recording, and under personnel, under section five, you've got the clerk of the court, which would be me, and that's standard in any general law city, almost any general law city, if you don't have separate personnel, the city secretary is always the clerk of the court. And then separately, under that, in section six, you have the court reporter, that's different, this is unique to courts of record. That is because all the proceedings of the court have to be recorded and preserved for an appeal process. It's an extra person, you don't hire them, it's a contract person, it would be somebody that we would contract with, they would come in, and that fee, if the defendant wants to appeal, the cost for transcribing that, that goes to the court reporter, is covered by the defendant. I, seven, the prosecutor is always assigned by a town attorney's office. Then, under section eight, we've got court costs and fees, I outlined some of them, a couple of them I've got dollar amounts in there, but I intend to pull those out when y'all review it, if you wanna, when you're ready to finalize the ordinance, we're gonna put those fees in the consolidated fee ordinance. But this is an outline of the different situations and things that we would be filing, we would be charging fees for. Section nine covers the process for appeals. I honestly don't know if it's necessary to have that all in there, that's something that I would, I would like to hear from Andy, if it's necessary to have it, but it's easier to put it in and pull it out later, and we don't have to pay him to write it if it's not in there. 9.2 is, is the big one for us. 9.2 is the one that says that the appeals only go to Denton County because of an error, and it's not considered a trial de novo, which means a new trial, where they just look at it as if it came before them, and it was never reviewed by any other judge at any other time. They only look at the errors that are outlined in the appeal.
So, so let me, let me make sure everybody understands. If you, under current system, if you came in and had a trial before a judge, because of tall weeds and grass or something, you would do what you normally do. On a court of record, you do exactly the same thing, just there's a recording going on right here, so it's being recorded. Now, at the end of that, you say, I don't like this, I wanna appeal, I'm gonna appeal to Denton County. Well, what you would do is, you'd say, I wanna, I have to get a recording, you have to get that recording, that's electronic, has to be transcribed on a sheet of paper. You gotta pay for that, you're the one doing the appeal, we don't pay for it. You have to pay that person to transcribe that, use that, and file your appeal with Denton County. Now, the way it is right now, if you appeal to Denton County, they don't have to respect anything we did, they start over. If they say, we don't care about tall weeds and grass, I get, I'm too busy, they don't respect us, they don't respect what we do, we don't respect our values, they don't have to, they start over. And they decide on their values and their time, what they think. I don't like that. I'd rather be, like the court of record, they now have to appeal and say, what was the error? The error was what? That thing was wrong, they didn't let you testify, it's gotta be an error, and that's much harder, because you've gotta say, what's the specific error? Well, I didn't like what the judge said, that's not an error. Well, I think they picked on me, that's not an error. It's gotta be an error for you to appeal. They have to respect the city, and that's the part that I think is important, because right now, they don't have to. They put their own spin, and, and I don't like that at all. And I'm not ragging on them, I'm not, just the way the system is set up. So, but nobody, you still have the same exact trial procedure, the procedure hasn't changed, just now, there's gonna be recorder sitting there, recording. So, you still get to do everything you would normally do. Is that right, Lynda?
Yes.
Okay.
Operationally, nothing changes.
Nothing changes.
We're recording it right now.
This is just discussion only, this is not, it has to go to the attorney, Lynda wants to send it to the judge.
I guess that's what I was gonna ask, is, are you kinda looking for direction, to send it to the attorney, or?
Yes, that's what I-
Well, yeah.
Is the council-
Yeah, and I have not, I haven't sent it to the judge, because I have not gotten any feedback from council at all. If this is acceptable, if there's needs that you don't look more closely at, something you don't like, if you wanna change it, if you give me some direction or input of this, I'll get the ball rolling and have it reviewed.
I'll have to get it looked at.
I was gonna go, if we're not to rush, I mean, kinda having a little bit more background on seeing this, and we wait this, next month, and then, we just have a little bit more time to take a look at it.
Sure.
And then, next month, or something, comes up, it's in-
Would our, would our judge charge us to look at it?
He may, he may. No, I'm not, I couldn't say sure. There is a possibility that you would.
Hmm?
Okay.
If he doesn't, can we have him look at it first?
Yes.
Before we set it down?
Yes.
It doesn't change any of his functions or responsibilities?
Uh, no. No, he still operates the same, and he is the presiding judge over court of record now.
All right.
So, I'm sorry, was that a direction to you? Y'all wanna review it for a month? You wanna go ahead and send it to the judge now, or do you want me to wait?
I'd like to get it, if the judge doesn't charge, he's just gonna scan it and say it looks good, I mean, you figure that out, as far as the judge goes.
I guess all I was thinking is, I mean, read it, to read it in the packet, and then kinda have the background, so I'd kinda like to read it, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if we can wait, wait till next month, that's fine, or if we wait a couple weeks and-
There's, there's, there's no inherent sense of urgency, it's just something that-
Yeah, 'cause this one's just, it wasn't like the building plans, right, it's a little different.
It's a little different, all right, give you that. Okay. All right, next up, next up is the nuisance ordinance. So what I wanted to do here was just kinda give everybody a little bit of a heads-up as to what's coming. You know, in the old days, so we have this nuisance ordinance, and in the old days, what councils would do periodically is, something would, would be annoying, and they would jam it in the nuisance ordinance, call it a nuisance. And, so the nuisance ordinance became kind of unwieldy, it had things in there like, anything that was unsightly was a nuisance, and you could be cited for it. Well, you could never prosecute that, but they tried. So, there were things like that, or one, there was one of, anything you do which is unharmonious was a violation of the nuisance ordinance. Okay, that's great, sounds, sounds like a terrific ordinance. Ed, why didn't you write that?
I don't know.
So anyway, so what we've done though, over time, is the nuisance ordinance, things that are definitive have been peeled away, because they're subsumed under other things. So, you know, people parking in the front yard, in the middle of the yard, all that kinda stuff, parking your boat in the backyard, that's now in the junk car ordinance, that's parking on an improved surface, so that's already there. The barking dogs, making a noise with your dogs and all that, that's already covered under animal control, that's in section five of animal control.
That's all sudden the noise.
And, yeah, some of it's in the noise, right. So the, the tall weeds and grass, and outdoor stores and all that, that's in there, but Ed and Clint have been working in the background on this property maintenance code. We don't have the property maintenance code now, so it's one of our holes, we have something that's not quite on point, but you know, if you, if you know, if your front windows broke to your house, and you put up a sheet of plywood in front of your house, over your windows, there's nothing we can do about that. There is no code that says you gotta fix your windows, or, you know, Serena got a hole in her roof, she just throws a tarp over the thing, and we're, six months from now, there's still this tarp flapping on the top of her roof, there's no city ordinance that we could say, you gotta fix that. So, that's what property maintenance is about, it's about maintaining your property, making you fix things. So it seems a logical place to put the tall weeds and grass, the fact that you can't outdoor storage, construction equipment, or automobile parts, that's currently in the nuisance ordinance, that's already in there. So, it seems like the logical place for that is for Ed and Clint to incorporate that in the forthcoming property maintenance code, just slip that in, that seems more reasonable. For some bizarre reason, in the nuisance ordinance, there's a prohibition against contractors burning their construction waste. I have never seen a new house where the guy heated up and burned it next to the new house, but for some reason, that's been in our nuisance ordinance, Paul put it in a long time ago. Because I'm ahead of schedule, I can say this, one of the other things that they did, they tried in the past, was they tried to put in the nuisance ordinance that you couldn't burn outdoor. And it was an interesting, it was, it was a very nice educational experience, as they tried to saw through that, because they tried to make it, you couldn't burn outside. But then they started thinking, well, okay, how big, well, let's say you could burn, but it's gotta be in a six-foot circle, but then people, well, how do you measure that? Beginning of the burn, the end of the burn, start of the burn? Then people said, well, so what you're saying is, instead of having one 10-foot fire, I should have five, six-foot fires burning? That doesn't seem to be the right way to go for safety, to make me monitor six fires instead of one big one. So they couldn't get the outdoor burning thing figured out. And then I think somebody probably figured out, look, anybody that lives on the lake, they burn on core property anyway, which is not inside the city limits, so it won't apply. But the thing they left in was this burning of construction waste, which I've never seen happen. A logical place to me of that burning of construction waste is to either put it in the builder handbook, or put it in our, the residential code, the building code. And Clint, I think you told me, you'd think it's already there.
I think it's there, it might be implied that, because you have to have dumpster call off, means you can't burn it, but to put the words, do not burn it, that's not a big deal either.
Yes, I think that's something I would propose that we incorporate, and noise is already at the attorney, I sent that along to the attorney about, you know, the excessive noise thing. So, where this is headed is, I see at some point in the next couple of meetings, the nuisance ordinance is probably gonna end up being repealed. And then, I want you to understand, these other ones that are coming, that's where it's gonna go. So we gotta get the timing right. But we are gonna still cover nuisances, they're just gonna be in the right buckets, rather than having some useless thing that we can't, we can't do. Okay? All right, so that's the idea with the, with the nuisance ordinance. And I'm, I'm handling that, that nuisance ordinance. All right, next up, we have the zoning, the zoning, Clint made this, I made a couple of- Uh, the zoning, Clint made the, I made a couple of suggested changes. Clint put them in. This is for everyone to read. So here's the, okay, under the statutes, what has to happen under zoning. Under zoning, before you can make a change, we are required to mail out notices to everybody within two hundred feet of a change in the zoning category. So if we change you from residential to commercial or residential four houses per acre or residential three, if we change your classification, you have to mail out notices to everybody within two hundred feet. We're not changing anyone's classification. We're not changing anybody's, what you can do. All we're doing is, is one of the variants is one of the roof pitches and the side yards and the driveways and they're all redlined in here. They're all administrative stuff. Nonetheless, in the mayor's letter, I am gonna put notice in there and mail it to everybody with the mayor's letter. So it'll be included for notice, for everybody, that we're making these changes. The redlined document we have on the web or somehow will be accessible.
It's, it's on the web via the packet.
The packet.
We can go separate that out.
Well, we'll figure that out. So the first thing is, 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 that'll be the notice. And then next meeting in February, there's a public hearing. Lynda has to advertise in the newspaper, the public hearing. And then that's when we have the public hearing and then we vote to approve the zone. That, that's the steps you gotta do. So unless anybody has any more changes to make, this train is leaving the station. We're gonna advertise in the newspaper and February meeting, we're voting. And I'm putting in the mayor's letter in a week that this is what's going on. Everybody good?
And you're mailing the packets this month?
Mailing.
Didn't you say you have to mail these out?
I have to mail notice.
A notice.
I, I don't, we don't have to. But we're, we're in the mayor's, in the mayor's letter. I'm gonna put another sheet in there, which is your notice. Hey, nobody's cost, nobody's categories are changing, but this is your notice. You know, see the document. Generally speaking, here are the issues. See the document. There's a public hearing. That's it. That's the notice that's required. So we're going over and above and beyond, plus.
And all the notice instructions are in the zoning document too.
Yeah, and I, and I know when you'll see the document when Clint finalizes it.
Additional reading if it references the title code, if you want to go read the title code.
I mean, if you were, the, you know, if you were to look at this ordinance, the cover page of the ordinance is, is, is interesting because it'll say, public hearing, June first, public hearing, July third, public hearing. And it's a nice chronology to say, when you pick up that ordinance, you know, for crying out loud, we had like five public hearings and then it was, you know, passed on this day.
I think tonight was the fourth, wasn't it?